Good evening. I want to call the Windsor Board of Education Special Meeting and Public Forum with a Finance Committee immediately following. Meeting for Tuesday, February 6. Item here. Sorry. Yes, I have an item in front of me.
Yes. He skipped ahead a week.
Hopefully it's-
Mr. President, if it's in order?
Mr. Lockhart?
I move that we amend the presented agenda that states Tuesday, February 6th to today's date, Tuesday, January 3rd.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos to correct the agenda that board members have in front of us from Tuesday, February 6th to Tuesday, January 30th. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, abstention. Motion carries 7-0-0. So this is the public forum time, so if Ms. Daly, if you could read your script.
Good evening, this is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine on the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you, and as a reminder, at the two and a half minute mark, for anybody in the room, Mr. Lockhart will hold up a red card briefly, and at the three minute mark, he'll hold it up and keep it up, and at that point, please try to finish up your remarks. For anybody listening or online, if we probably won't may not be able to see us, if you don't, and obviously if you're on the phone, you can't, Mr. Lockhart will hold that red card up to the three minute, at the three minute mark, and please conclude your remarks. So we'll start with, in the boardroom, is anybody would like to address the board tonight regarding the budget? Seeing none, is there anybody with a hand raised online?
At this time, there are no attendees with their hands raised, and there are no open questions or comments in the Q and A.
At this point in time, I think she's going to be the speaker. You want to- Oh, wait a minute. Ms. Din, finish the virtual first, and then you can come back if you have to. Anybody, is nobody online?
No, there's not.
Anybody else back to the boardroom would like to address the board? Mr. Nigras?
You'll be speaking during the presentations later. She wants to speak as a-
Oh, as an audience?
Yeah. You wanted to speak as an audience.
But then I was going, then I get a presentation, so do I want to speak?
I, you should speak now.
Okay, that's perfectly fine.
If you could give us your name and address?
My name is Julie DeNigras. I am the nursing supervisor for the Windsor Public Schools, and my address, I live at 26 Circle Drive, Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to address adding a full-time nurse back into the 24-25 budget. In the past two years, we have had an ESR nurse, and I would like to have that ESR nurse become back as a full-time nurse. I've provided each of you with a packet, and in that packet, it describes my reasonings for the additional support of the school nurses. It also gives the duties of school nurses for people who aren't quite sure what we do, and it has factual numbers that back up the data for the acuity of students seen, as well as the increase in students that have been seen. I also know that you received as a board a letter from the Windsor for, the Windsor Nurse Association voicing sort of the same sentiments that I put out in the packet. There's a few reasons why I feel that this position should be staying in. One of the first things is with the amount of extra students that we see, as well as the amount of acuity that we're seeing. Liability issue is there. We are trying very hard to see the amount of students that we can see. Forty to sixty is on average in the elementary schools in a day, as well as about eighty is anywhere in the high school, sixty to eighty in the junior high. Which, if anybody's ever been to the doctor, most doctors don't see more patients an hour, let alone the amount that we see in that time. One of the things I like to do is to keep staffing as we can in each of the schools, and this year's been especially difficult since we did not fill the second Sage Park nurse position. I've been pulling from where I can, and even with being down a nurse, we've had a couple of schools that have had to go without a nurse for the day or a couple of hours. That in itself is a liability to us as a district, and it's not very good for the health and safety of the students. Another thing that I find is that we are a unique type of position. When an educator is out, the principal can fill with many different ways. They have permanent building subs, they can move another, they can move another person in the building, they can move a music teacher to a classroom if they had to. There's different ways to fill that position. Even I, with my degree, and most of my nurses who have their four-year degree, actually qualify in the state of Connecticut to sub in a classroom. In order to sub for the school nurse, you have to have an RN license as well from the state of Connecticut, as well as have your CPR certified. And that's something that is, we don't have people that can just, we can just pull from a school when a nurse is out and say, oh, you have your license and you have your CPR, so that you can sub for us. So that's one of the things that makes us very unique. I do know how difficult everyone's job is. We all work together as a community. I don't feel that my job is any more important than anybody else's because it takes all of us to have, to have these kids, you know, be educated and stay healthy. It's just, it's harder to fulfill what our role is with the context of people that we have right now. And the last thing is actually, it's kind of fiscally sound. If we are to take what we used right now so far this year, using our floater sub, we take the second nurse and we use her as a floater sub, and then we have to go out of our way to get more subs. We've already incurred fifty, let me see if I've got the right exact numbers. I'm sorry. Yes, we have incurred fifty-nine and a half hours, and at sixty-five dollars an hour, which is what a nurse costs by using an agency, that's already twenty-seven thousand dollars for fifty-seven and a half days. If we were to do that out over a year, it's period, for if we do the first ninety-seven days and then the next ninety-seven days, we'd be spending almost fifty thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars for that nurse, and I think it's better to have a nurse that we pay fifty-eight thousand dollars that we get for all one hundred and eighty-nine days instead of just a little over a hundred days. Thank you.
Thank you. This is not a back and forth, but if you're going to be speaking later, we may be able to dive into some of the things you've mentioned.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board? Ms. Daly, one more time, for anybody online with a hand raised?
There is no one else with a hand raised, and there are no comments in the Q and A. Although Ms. Taylor is making, has made a comment thinking that when you called to vote permitting the date on the agenda that you have, you called it seven zero zero, but I believe that is currently the only person not in attendance.
Okay, so she did affirmatively vote?
Yes.
Is there objection to changing that vote, either side? Okay, you can correct that. Move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Abstentions? Ms. Taylor? Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero zero. We are adjourned from the public forum and set to begin the Finance Committee meeting at six sixteen.
Good evening, I would like to call the Windsor Board of Education Finance Committee meeting of Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. Would you please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. All right. Ms. Daly, recognizing you for audience visitors.
Good evening, this is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you very much. Different than the public forum, public forum you get five minutes. Within the committee meeting, you get three. At the two and a half minute mark, Mr. Fury will raise a red card, asking you to wind up your comments, and at three minutes, he will hold it up. If you are virtual, at two minutes thirty seconds, Mr. Fury will chime in, say please, you have thirty seconds remaining, and at three minutes, he will simply say time. All right. With that being said, is there anyone online wishing to be recognized, Ms. Daly?
There is no one that has their hand raised, and there are no comments in the Q and A.
Thank you very much. Anyone within the boardroom wishing to be recognized? If so, please come to the desk, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. I am seeing and hearing none. Being deliberately slow. Without objection from the board, I am going to close audience visitors. Is there any objection? Hearing none, seeing none, so ordered. At this time, we will go into agenda item number eight, which is the budget proposal. Before us on the agenda today is the questions from January 23rd. Recognizing, Dr. Hill, are we going to still do the same standard practice, go directly, Ms. Batcholder? All right.
Yes, Mr. Chair, sorry.
I just want to make sure that we're clear on the rules of order. Recognize Ms. Batcholder. Questions from January 23rd, 2024, is there any questions from that packet that we need answered, or they have, we have to wait to the flow of the presentation?
I believe they all fit in with, in the presentation when we start to go through them, the out, the remaining questions.
Okay.
That are still out. Because all the school questions were answered.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we can go directly into the introductory pages.
All right, so Mr. Chair, do you want me to read my letter?
Nope, you can give an executive overview, and then from there, I will ask the committee if they have any questions in regards to any of the introductory pages. So executive summary, and then I'll open up to the board for any of the pages, which is currently page 1A through 1F.
Thank you. So as I shared at our last budget meeting, in my letter, generally the synopsis is that I give an explanation to the community as to how we go about preparing the budget, considering all the things that are going on in the town, the school district, the things that we need in the school district, our contractual obligations. And also this year in particular, the ESR funds that we've had the benefit of for three years, they've come to an end, and as I said last week, we've determined what positions we need from those ESR funds. Over the three years, we have enmeshed some of the positions into the general budget. As people have left positions, we've enmeshed those particular ESR positions into the general budget. So we don't have all those twenty-two at this point. We don't have a large number of ESR-funded positions that we are looking to keep as compared to many of my colleagues across the state. So also, we understand that, as I said, all bargaining unit contracts, those are obligations that we have to meet, all six bargaining units. So we've been, we've come out to a six-point-four percent proposed budget, but of course, that's why we're here, to look at the budget in its totality, and to see, you know, how we're going to move, whether it's to add more, to cut more, whatever it is that the board is seeking at this point. But that's how the budget is presented thus far.
Okay.
The next page, page 1A, is basically our mission statement and our goals of Windsor Public Schools. I will just read the mission statements, "To develop the genius in every child and to create lifelong learners." And then you have the goals. So these have been adopted and established and present since 2016. And at this point, I will hand things over to Ms. Batcholder.
1B is every year I show you what we actually bring in for revenue that goes directly to the town of Windsor. So the ECS share, education cost sharing grant, our health services grant, which goes directly to our non-pubs in the town of Windsor. And our excess cost is a direct relation to how much we spend for special ed services above and beyond that four-point-five times. Tuition is any student that we currently have in our district, usually from DCF, that we are able to bill of the town that they are coming from. Any questions on that page?
Any questions on 1B? Oh, excuse me, 1B, yes. Hearing none, Miss Batcholder?
1C is just an overview of the past four years of budgets, so you can see the percents and dollar amounts. And as Dr. Hill said, our superintendent's proposed budget for 24-25 is a six-point-four percent increase. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Batcholder for page 1C? Hearing none, Miss Batcholder?
1D is an overview of all staffing in the district. It will, it shows certified versus non-certified, and what is our general fund-funded positions versus our grant-funded positions. I want to note, this does not include the ESR funds because I, we have kept the ESR funds very separated throughout the past couple of years, so everyone can see them as a separate area in the budget book. So overall, the superintendent's proposed 25 staff changes is a reduction of a Director of Information Technology. We are then adding a technology teacher, which is a contractual obligation that we have. A reduction of Director of Leadership and Talent Development. Both of those are positions that we're currently in the WASA union. We also reduce the coordinator of the Office and Family Community Partnership, which was grant-funded. But as I explained a lot during last budget season, that we had to look for ways to start to embed that position in our general fund budget if we were going to continue with that position. And then to be announced, we have two certified staff members at Windsor High School that based on scheduling, we will determine probably within the next couple, couple months.
All right, any questions for page 1D from the committee? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I'm not sure exactly where this fits in, but I'm asking that you add one full-time registered nurse to the position for the budget of 2024-2025. The number of students who require immediate medical care for registered nurses here has grown significantly over the years. Registered nurses are in jeopardy for carrying out these medical care demands of standard of care and safe care as defined by the National League of Nursing and the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. This is due to the limited number of hired registered nurses at Windsor Public Schools. You're placing each student who requires immediate medical care at risk with a staffing shortage of one full-time registered nurse. In addition, you are placing any registered nurse at risk for being sued and the loss of their professional nursing license issued by the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. On March 9th, 2020, I met with, in person with Dr. Cook here at LPW. I explained the situation to him right before COVID-19 shut down. This situation still has not been corrected. This situation is easily resolved by hiring one full-time registered nurse. Immediate and timely medical treatment delivered to students hereby registered nurses and protecting registered nurses from litigation are the most important issues now pending that I see. Thank you.
I thank you for that narrative, Ms. Cantor. When we get to that site, I'm going to be assumptive. You're going to, I thank you for your, your discussion on the matter. I'm going to be very assumptive when we get to that site to discuss nurses, you're going to wish to be recognized again. Is that correct?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, I didn't want to cut you off in the middle of your statement, I just want to-
I wasn't sure, thank you.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure we level set for everybody, that we haven't discussed that in the budget site yet, and just want to make sure that we give the staff an opportunity to actually get to that site and to actually discuss it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? We're done with 1D?
So if I may, can, I wasn't, can I finish on 1D?
You're not done with 1D.
Sorry.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Miss Batcholder?
So I just want to point out that at no point did we reduce the health, the nurse in the budget. So on page 22, you will see that that is a position that we are looking to fund within the general fund, and if you look at the questions that were sent last night, or the last Tuesday night right before this meeting, that same question was asked, and I answered that I listed the page, excuse me, the positions that we are not continuing to fund in the general fund, and the nurses, the nurse is not one of them. So we were, we currently have that funded in the proposed superintendent's 24-25 budget.
So you will be funding ten nurses, I believe it is?
It is currently in the budget as the superintendent's proposed budget.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to discuss that once we got to the site.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure that we on the same level playing field here. All right, but your, your, your comments are welcome. Just want to make sure we know where we're going to follow them. Are we still on 1D? Without objection, you're done with 1D? 1E, Miss Batcholder?
So this next page is a preview of the projected 24-25 based on NESDEC projections for school enrollment and our actual enrollment as a 10-1 2022 and 10-1 2023. So it shows you the decrease and increase by grade level and by elementary, middle, and high.
Any questions from the board? And these are, there's actuals, and then these are actual projections that helps us guide the budget. That could be a delta negative or positive, but it puts us in a, in a, in a certain range for our budget. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, just for clarification, Downware says student, not students not in district. This is referring to students that attend magnets and other schools that we pay for.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm hearing none. Miss Batcholder, 1F?
So this was the new document that I handed out at the start of this meeting. This is our magnet school enrollment and tuition compared to last school year. We have roughly sixteen more students. However, as you will see, those sixteen students are all within the area that we do not pay. So I want to point out that the current budget is, which I, you'll see in the next Board of Ed meeting for the finances, that we're going to be significantly under budget for this school year. And one of the questions that was posed by Mr. Panos through the question sheet last week was why, and that's why, because we're currently under budget. And I just want to point out that I went back the past few years. The increase of CREC was eighteen-point-two-eight percent on magnet school tuition from school year 21-22 to school year 22-23. And then this school year, they raised an additional thirteen-point-seven-five percent to our district, so even the two-hundred-thousand dollars that is in the current superintendent's proposed is still under budget based on our numbers today.
All right, as we discussed this, as a board, we knew this was coming maybe two, three years ago, that CREC was running a deficit, and that they were looking to get those funds made up by, from the CGA, when that did not fully happen. We knew for a fact that they were going to start fully charging back the descending districts to supplement. We are now in that space right now. And this board, over the past five, six years, has been very strategic in trying to win our students back and to make sure that we don't violate any parent choice of where they would like to send their children. But at the same time, we want to make sure that our offerings as a, as a well-staffed and resourced district, that we win those students back. There's certain things we're not going to be able to do, especially in the grade school area, like monastery, stuff like that. But we're competing very well on the high school level and winning those kids back, and we want to make sure that we continue to do that. So this is something that we have lobbied our CGA on, and we will continue to lobby the CGA to make sure that they take away the adversarial aspect of funding for parents that may want to attend a magnet school or Voag school and have that funding come directly out of the state budget instead of coming directly out of the budget of the school district. And that could definitely save us to the tune of almost three-quarters of a million dollars if we started going down that path. So it's real dollars, and it gives us a real reason to have advocacy with our state reps and our senators across the state. Any discussion? I will recognize Mr. Panos first, and then Mr. Fury.
Just a little thing here in the middle of the Glastonbury, Voag has zero tuition. Shows we have three people there, or no, Great, the Great Path, I'm sorry. So there's no cost?
So Great Path Academy, as of starting this school year, is now under a CREC regime, and now we have to pay for it.
Yep.
In prior years, it was not. In prior years, it was not.
Okay, so you're throwing us last years, these are all last years.
Yes, if you look in the right-hand column...
The current years, what we're looking at is current years.
Right, so if you looked at the book from last year, you would see Great Path on the top section?
Right.
Where we don't pay.
Right. That's that adversarial relationship I just spoke about where it's not, the funding is not coming from the state, it's coming directly out of our school budget, because we're responsible for being able to support the choices of parents of where they would like to send their children.
So if I'm reading this correctly, the current year, we have $32,000 for three students at the, at the Regio School of Arts, right? Just to give an example.
That's correct.
And so this, that's over $10,000 per student, is that? Seems high. Is that, is that common to have? I seem to recall that most of these were at a four to six.
Excuse me, your question won't change, but I want to make sure you're reading the right column. So for the Regio Magnet School, it's actually 38,000, as you just said, the Regio School? Right, so if you look at the first, the first set of columns, those closest to the name of the school would be the, the last...
I wanted him to finish before I, but I appreciate you.
Okay, I'm backwards.
Well, he'll see there's, it's more money than 10,000 a student.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I guess, so it's, it's only 6,000.
6,335.
6,330.
Yep.
And I think this, CREC is still, as me being on the CREC council, they're still running a deficit. And those are real talks that we're having as a, as a member of that council. And all descending members support the rest, support the, the mission of the rest, but not at the detriment of the local districts and the buildings that we run. And that's the adversary relationship that we want the state to resolve. Mr. Panos? All set?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we probably have some discussion as to why their rates are, why are they running, what are they buying, too many cigars when they have lunches or something? I know they do lavish lunches, I know that.
They, they, they do serve bear-bear lunches. However, they've been definitely keeping their, their, their rates flat to descending districts for quite a long time, and they did give us a runway of like two years to let us know that if the funding wasn't coming in at a certain point, this was going to happen. And so far, they're being true to their word. And this is not just happening last year, this is well over four, five years that we've been having this discussion. Mr. Fury?
Just a quick question. Glastonbury Voag, two students. Got 100% increase from the year before. Are those students there, do they have a choice of being there full day or half day? And where are our current students?
Yes, so the Voag, I'm sorry, you're at the Glastonbury Voag, the two students? Yep, so that's the full-day program. And then the half-day, you can, is under, a little further down. We do half-day for Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts. That's the one that we, they can elect to have half-day.
So the Voag is, is a full-day program, flat out, that we fund? And then the other program is you have the option to go full or half? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question?
Ms. Madison?
Just a processing question here. So it says per student, 6.5K. That's more than it is to stay in Windsor, so how is it expensive for us? I mean, just to, just to look at the mechanics of this, doesn't it save money for every kid who goes there? Does it incre, decreases our head count by having them go to those schools, and we only, only pay 6,500 a student?
That is the tuition that we are obligated to pay, yes. So what's the question, I'm trying to understand?
But if I divide the town budget by the number of students in the Windsor schools, I get a number that's significantly higher than 6.5. So just, what's that?
Yeah, our per people expenditure is around 18,000 if we were to like average everything out, not including special ed and all that. However, to take it the way you're taking it, it doesn't act, it, it doesn't fall out like that because of our students would be dispersed over 12 grades. And it's not saying we're going to just dump 600 kids in the high school, for an example. Is that a...
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try to give a different example. So you understand, you got 600 troops, you bring them to a battalion?
Yep.
You don't go into one company. You got four companies. You spread them out, it doesn't change the head count that much, so we don't have to hire a bunch of staff necessarily for 600 people to be absorbed back into the district. So it's not a savings just because they're going out at that rate. So we could educate those kids with current teachers. So if the class size in a particular classroom was 22 kids, let's just say 22 kids, and all the principals and lower levels look away, 22 kids per teacher, and we bring back, and it ends up being, let's say, three more kids in each, so now you got 25, but we didn't have to add another teacher.
That's fair, I understand. Thank you.
That's, that's the savings right there. It'd be cheaper for us.
Yeah, although at some threshold, though, it triggers, you do have to hire more teachers.
At some point.
Okay, so...
We have to have some, but if you look at the number here that we're working with, you know, you're almost 1.5 million dollars, like that's, we're not giving up a million dollars for the teacher.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, it's just, it's a lot to look at and see, like for, what was it, this year? 659 students, we're, we're paying out this much money. I was under the impression, I'm not sure if Ms. Batchelder or you, with your CREC council hat, can explain to me. I believe there was some talks about legislation last year in the CGA for some sort of situation where the state would cover CREC's tuition costs to the sending districts, but from our understanding, that has not happened, correct?
So what happened, that went into place last school year, for last school year. We received the grant this September for last school year. So the town is allowing us to keep it even though it's from last year's fund, so we will offset this year's budget, but as you, it still won't, because the, we received, I'm going off the top of my head right now, it's around 2, 328,000. We're looking about 500K in the hole, so I will reclass that for this year, but that was for a one-year stint unless Mr. Leonard, Leonard...
That was definitely a lag, as she stated, it definitely was a lag in the funding, and it was not fully funded. And at the end of the last SC, there was a lot of implementers that was tagged in the bill at the end, and at the end of the day, it did not happen.
Yeah, I was assuming it was some sort of situation like that.
We advocated hard for it, and it was not fully funded the way we would like for it to be.
I only asked because I spoke to a legislator, I spoke to another legislator who assured the previous legislator that the districts should have nothing to worry about because they don't have to pay CREC anymore. So I just wanted to have that public, you know, communication on the, the actual issue here and, and the fact that it's not rectified. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? And yes, with my CREC vice chair hat on, it is, it is a very, very contentious point for the viability of both descending districts and CREC. CREC does not want to harm the local districts, but CREC also is being very passionate in saying that we've been woefully underfunded for a very long time. But we got some local districts that are financially strapped and struggling, and to keep their own doors open and keep their staff. So public education is a state mandated entity per our constitution, and it's going to take a comprehensive solution with all of us, really, really advocating with the CGA. There's no other way to put it. We just have to keep pressure. Mr. Panos?
I wonder if the fact that we have a fair number of students who are participating in the Hartford Magnet Schools for which we do not pay has any influence on them saying, well, Windsor can, can handle, can handle a CREC increase, or has any kind of influence here over these prices, or the, the, the lack of empathy for our plight? And we have 218 students for whom we pay nothing. This was a CREC, I mean, this was a Sheff v. O'Neill settlement. And so anybody who sends their child to a, a Hartford Magnet School for that, we, we do not pay. You know, that would be quite a thing if they came back, you know, 200 came back, and it would undoubtedly cause some sort of requirement for an increase of a number of teachers or whatever, so. But, you know, with 285 going to CREC, you know, it's still, like you say, it's 1.8 million there, and there are other magnet schools that are 150,000. So I, I just, I, I don't know whether that has, you know, people, other, other towns are in a similar situation, and they're, and they're thinking as well, we have a pass anyway for a number of students, so we can handle it. I don't know.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson?
I'll just add, a comment that you made that really stuck out to me was the idea of ending the adversarial relationship between school choice and, and descending towns and the people, the districts that actually end up paying. And as we see, yeah, we don't pay for these kids to get educated in the Hartford Magnus, but somebody's footing that bill. And oftentimes, when we see this district is in a whatever deficit, we point and, and we look like, oh my gosh, they're not handling their business well, but it's, it's stuff like this, you know, 218 students, we're not sending any money, not saying that, you know, we should just fork up a whole bunch of money, but it's, we, something has to be figured out on a much higher level than we're operating right now, because this is, this is kind of nuts for the future of public education.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. Our oath is based in the Connecticut Constitution, and we understand that, yes, we were elected by the citizens of the town of Windsor, but we also understand that decisions we make impact all kids for public education. In this situation, Hartford, they're, they're facing a very, very dramatic budget deficit, and that is probably one of the arguments that that's laid on the table. And we have to be very mindful that, yes, as a collective nine, we are responsible for Windsor, but we also have to have some ethical empathy that our decisions do not harm others in what we're doing to make sure that all children, all children have access to high-quality public education. And I think that's the reason why we're deliberating today, to make sure that we're making very ethical decisions. So your point's well received. Any other discussion? Ms. Batchelder, we're done with 1F? We are done with introductory pages. May we move on to the next item? All right, continuing education. Ms. Batchelder?
I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Haiti.
All right, and I would like to call Ms. Myella.
That's page 15 for the board, page 15 and 16 for the board. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Our program has accomplished the following so far this fiscal year. We continue to offer the Turbo GED for students who need minimal, minimal preparation to sit for the official GED test series. This is a great path for students who are eager to enter college, training, or the military and need a high school credential to start their career. We are in our second year of offering the NEDP program, which has been very successful. We increased our ESL retention rate by 200% using text and email messaging through our Laces Student Data Management System. There have been a total of 11 families looking for childcare this year. However, we currently do not have space during our morning program. I'm looking into alternatives like offering childcare in the evenings only, assisting parents to enroll their children in the Windsor Public School Preschool, Preschool, Preschool Program, or assisting parents to enroll their children in the First Church School Readiness Program. The latter would also include addressing the student transportation barrier, and all would require the child meets the age requirements. This year, the State Department of Education mandated that every adult education program have a career navigator on staff. The job of the career navigator is to work within our organization to create an overarching plan for transition to careers, including transition to post-secondary education and/or training, work with the community employers, community resources, work with the local workforce investment boards, share information about employment, training, and other career-related opportunities. To stay in compliance with this mandate, Kathy Kajak, our program facilitator, and I attended over 30 hours of training. It is one of our program's goal to hire and train a career navigator for next fiscal year in order to stay in compliance and provide a more substantial career navigation for our students, including helping them register with CT hires to take advantage of WEOWA funding. We continue to collaborate with the Hartford American Job Center to allow our students to use all the resources provided by the AJC and take advantage of WEOWA funding. I am also in talks with the American Job Center to host a monthly two-to-three-hour career event or office hours onsite at our program with the representatives to better serve our students and community. I continue to sit on the North Central Connecticut Adult Coalition, Coalition Task Force in partnership with the Capitol Workforce Partners to advocate for funding to individual adult education programs and move away from the standard distribution of funding to the rest. I'm also advocating to receive direct funding from the state's digital equity plan, which is called the Connecticut Everyone Connected Digital Equity, and to better serve our population and get them career and workforce ready. Another goal for next fiscal year is to offer the GED boot camp as needed to increase our GED completion rates by at least 20%. This, this past fall, we did a pilot math GED boot camp with Kathy, our program facilitator, taking the lead. Student participation for this boot camp was by invitation only. It was offered to students who had passed three out of the four subject tests. The boot camp consisted of three consecutive evenings, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, of intense GED math. The classes were from 5:00 to 9:00 with dinner provided. We opened our official Pearson View Test Center on Saturday for students to test while all the material was fresh. We achieved a 50% success rate and currently have three GED graduates so far. Continuation of the boot camp will assist us in reaching our 20% increase for GED graduates for next fiscal year. Because of the success, the success of our GED boot camp, Kathy has been asked to present at the State GED Day this Friday, and will, and will also present at our annual Connecticut Association of Adult and Continuing Education Conference in March. I'm, I'm very proud to announce that Kathy has been awarded Educator of the Year by the Connecticut Association of Adult and Continuing Education and will be recognized at the conference in March. This is our program's fourth case conference since 2012. We are in our second year of offering the NEDP as another option to earn a high, high school completion certificate. Last year, we had two graduates. This year, we have five active students and one completing her assessment to qualify. It is projected that we will have four NEDP graduates this year, which is 100% increase from last fiscal year. To help us continue with this NEDP achievement for next fiscal year, we will train an additional adult, adult education teacher to become an NEDP advisor assessor. Having another trained NEDP teacher will also make sure we stay in compliance with the NEDP staff requirements of three advisor assessors. Our support percentage from the Connecticut State Department of Education for next fiscal year is projected to be 37.14%. Our spring semester started yesterday, and so far, we have 85 active students. If we include our fall active students, we are serving over 140 students this year. Our stu, our students are from 26 different countries, speaking 24 languages other than English. As most of you know, we also offer enrichment classes. So our enrichment program has served over 400 community members with pickleball, watercolor, and open studio continuing to be the most popular. We are excited to offer a dumpling-making class taught by one of our very own English-language learners. This class sold out in two days and currently has a waiting list. Some other achievements our program has had so far is successfully finding employment for two of our students within Windsor Public Schools. One student is working in food service at the high school, and the other student works at JFK as a professional. We have a new website, which is not only very user-friendly, but is compliant with all the American Disability Act web content accessibility requirements. With the new website comes the same logo, but with a different color scheme. Um, with the new website comes the same logo, but with a different color scheme. Every year, we celebrate National Adult Education Family Literacy Week. This year, we were honored to have Mayor Donald Trinks present our program with a Town of Windsor proclamation in honor of this event and proclaim September eighteenth through twenty-fourth Adult Education and Family Literacy Week throughout the Town of Windsor and encouraging all residents to work together for a more educated society and skilled work, workforce in our state. Earlier this month, we were informed that our program was chosen by Cummins Engine Company to receive a five thousand dollar community grant, which addresses education and equality of opportunity. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Ms. Panels?
Can you describe the difference between the NDEP, um, courses and the work required compared to the GED?
Yes. So to earn a, a, there's three different ways in the state of Connecticut, you can earn a high school diploma, a credit diploma, uh, program is one of them. GED is another one with, which consists of, uh, taking and passing four subject tests, math, reading, social studies, and science. With the NEDP, um, you don't take an exam, it's all online, and it's a completion of competencies. You have to complete those competen, competencies at a hundred percent, however you get multiple tries to do that. Um, in the end, you will have completed a portfolio that goes for review and that gets reviewed by two different, uh, professionals. Um, once you have completed all of your ten competencies at a hundred percent, you are awarded a Windsor High School Adult Diploma.
So you consider it a, um, you consider that the material covered is GED plus a lot of other? It's a lot more than just the GED, which has just the four.
In the NEDP, it's a lot of life skills and workforce, um, skills needed for success.
Okay, the GED does the, the big four, right? Science, history, English, and math.
Correct.
That's all. And these others are, do they have these four plus career or technical?
They're a little more life skills, so, um, how to look for a job, how to balance your, a budget, um, how to, um, you know, find a doctor. Um, part of it is reading the Constitution of the United States of America and understanding that, so it is pretty in-depth and, and complex. How, the nice thing about that is if you have test, test anxiety, then, you know, this is a really good, uh, uh, option for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Ms. Fury?
Uh, just really a comment. Thank you for being here and presenting all the different programs that come under adult education. I think it's great that we have these alternatives and I'm, I'm thinking, as you described the difference between GED and, uh, the National External Diploma Program, I remember when you spoke to this previously and just gives another opportunity for more students to be graduated, um, have a diploma and have a Windsor, in this case, a Windsor diploma versus having to go to another school district. And it's amazing, all the different programs that come under adult education and especially as we may be taking in more and more, uh, folks from other, other countries and things. Luckily, the state does reimburse us for, uh, you know, ESL type of, of education, but thank you for your hard work and the vast programs that you cover.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Ms. Panels?
Um, on the, you know, I noticed the, increased the GED high school correlation graduates by twenty percent from five to six. Well, I mean, is that the ratio here? I mean, how many do you have? You, you say you have about a hundred and forty, um, a hundred and forty total?
Mm-hmm.
How many of them working for the GED?
Unfortunately, not as many as we'd like. They come in with very low skills, so they don't, when you come to our program, you take a placement test and we don't have very many that place within that, um, to, to start preparing to take the official exam. We have a very large adult basic education classes.
Well, I assume that we prepare them for the GED. We don't just administer.
Oh, absolutely, but our classes are split up into adult basic education and then GED prep courses. So a lot of students don't, unfortunately, aren't placing into the GED prep classes yet, but we will. That's the goal, to get the ABE students into the GED classes.
So the, the NEDP, though, what about them, what percent, I mean, are they, uh, what percent of your hundred and forty is in the NED, is in the National External Diploma Program, as you call it?
Right now, we have six.
You, six students?
Six students that are, um, going to, two are about to finish. Um, so two, three, three are, three in the process and one is still testing, because you still also have to, um, take a placement test in order to qualify for the National External Diploma.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, uh, reiterate Mr. Fury's comments and just saying thank you for the hard work you do, um, and just, uh, keep being creative and try your best to keep the students motivated. I know, uh, even as he mentioned, we have a lot of students, or sometimes we may have students who come from different countries. Like being Jamaican myself, I know people who come up from, um, Jamaica and they don't have their GED and oftentimes it takes a lot of motivation and effort to take that first step, to go back into schooling that they may have gotten in their country already. But, um, thank you for doing what you do and standing in your place to help them and keep them motivated.
Yeah, thank you for your kind words and thank you for your support. Our graduation is June fifth. We hope that you guys will come and support us, um, and then come visit anytime.
That's locked in, June fifth?
June fifth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Instructional Services, page seventeen. Um, Dr. Haiti?
All right, I would like to call Ms. Bonnie Feyman and Ms. Michelle Williams, our, um, secondary and elementary curriculum directors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, one, we wanted to begin by taking you through some of the highlights and major work, just like the other presenters have done. Um, spotlights from twenty-three, twenty-four that are reflected on the presentation slides. Our, um, first, our alignment of all of our district professional development with our four system-wide goals around tier-one instruction, data collection and analysis, SEL, and our school-to-home connection. Um, we actually have our PD Day coming up, February sixth, which is our final district PD Day of the year, but we've lined everything up for all of our sessions with those four buckets. Um, we have a fully adopted Dr. Haiti's data talks model across the buildings and have really expanded, expanded it and refined it, so we're now including more departments. We have a more consistent protocol and we're meeting more frequently. In fact, today I was at the high school for all of the data talks with our science department. Tomorrow, social studies at the middle school, so these are going strong and we're really getting some excellent conversations among teachers about what they're seeing in our data and what they are doing to, to improve and adjust their instructional practices. We also, um, worked on a new streamlined PLC or Professional Learning Community Protocol that we're using in, um, all of the buildings to make it easier and more accessible to everybody. Um, so we trained our PLC leaders across the district at the beginning of the year in this and again, it's, it's going strong, going well, and we have consistent PLC processes in every building across every grade and subject. At the high school, um, you may have remembered this from our presentation on the program of studies, we've been adding more dual enrollment options at the high school. Kind of, uh, connects into what we talked about with sending kids to Magnet Schools in the sense that we on expand our offerings and have a more comprehensive program, which we're doing. Um, and we've added, uh, a number of courses and, and we have our dual enrollment night, actually, this, this Thursday, so families can come and learn about those opportunities. Major work for our twenty-four, twenty-five. I'll hand that over to my colleague, Michelle.
Thank you, Bonnie. So some of the work that we are going to continue and embark on for our twenty-four, twenty-five school year is around, um, teaching vocabulary. So our data, as we're doing our data talks, a lot of that, a lot of the information that we are receiving has informed us that vocabulary is an area that we need to focus on as a district. So that is something that we, Bonnie and I have been talking about. Um, we are working with our coaches and supervisors on that already. We're going to continue some of that work. Um, at the high school or secondary level, Bonnie is working on disciplinary literacy skills and using building thinking classrooms. Do not ask me questions about building thinking classrooms. I'm going to pass it over to Leanna from last week. Um, but I will say, we are definitely embarking on that and I will say, we do have a fifth grade teacher who is studying up on that and is very interested in that from Clover Street School and has, um, started. So, uh, we were actually able to see that last week when we were visiting. Um, as you know, the right-to-read legislation that has passed, um, states that we, oh, big old sigh over there, Mr. Lockhart. Uh, states that we need to look at our curriculum, um, at the K-three level. Um, and right now, myself and the team are in a monthly series with right-to-read full day, uh, monthly series, um, learning about the science of reading or relearning the science of reading, um, and looking at some of our systems. So we are going to be piloting a program next year, so we are doing, we are having several meetings with companies, um, we are scheduling demonstration lessons at other, um, schools, um, so that is our major, major work at the K-three level. Um, the other thing that we really want to focus on is increasing interdisciplinary work across the district. And so, and I am happy to say that we're beginning that, we're starting that next week, um, with the primary and the, uh, intermediate level. Um, we're going to be including and having our special education teachers work with us and we're going to have our, um, coaches walk our teachers through planning interdisciplinary units and, uh, lessons using our current curriculum. Um, so we're excited about that, they're excited about that. Um, so if you have some time to visit next week, stop by the high school and Sage Park. Any questions for us?
I'll go last on this one. Ms. Panels?
Oh, um, could you just flesh out a little bit more about this right to read? I, I missed that at the, I missed that at the K-convention, you know, someone, somebody.
I'll let Mr. Lockhart answer that.
Yeah, he should. Yeah, yeah, why don't you tell us?
So there's, um.
So we don't know how to read, is, we don't know how to teach reading, is that the idea in the legislature?
So, the, the, we all know that none of us are happy with the, the reading scores, or the perceived testing scores. Uh, and there's been a huge push by the state legislature about two years ago to pass legislation to, um, push districts in the direction and, um, the science of, of, of reading and making sure that we improve performance across all the districts. Um, the State Department of Education, their role is to implement, um, what has been passed as law by the CGA. Um, so I'm, I'm going to focus on the CGA. Um, the CGA, I'm going to focus on the Connecticut General Assembly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So they, they've made it very clear that, um, in the beginning of this legislation, they offered, um, seven programs for all the districts within the state to utilize. And as we went through the waiver process, there was a lot of towns that were being rejected waivers because weren't checking the box. Didn't matter if your kids could read or not, you just had to make sure you were able to check the box of what the legislation was asking you for. Well, these seven programs did not provide any, um, professional development, any support. Um, my opinion, I stand strong on it. I stand strong on it as K president, stand strong on it as NSBA, um, director. Uh, we've been talking on the fact that, um, the, we knew the runway, it was a two-year one runway, and there's been a lot of heartburn, um, with a lot of educational stakeholders, um, superintendents, unions, even boards of educations. So we all know that, um, we want our children to read. That's not the point that we're, that's at issue here. The issue is, is how it's being forced upon and the lack of support. So this is something, K, K to three, um, went to an NSBA convention this past weekend and, um, heard directly from the, the lady, um, from Mississippi who, um, implemented it. And the way it was implemented and discussed in the conference is totally the way it's not being pushed in the runway here in the state of Connecticut. So I stand strong on that as well. You can quote me on that. So what we need to do is to invest instead of programs, we need to invest in the, the, uh, human capital, we need to invest in what we got going on. We all want to do better. Uh, we all need to rally around the superintendent and his, and his team to really, really continue what we're doing and to make sure that we find different ways for educate, for, for, for reading. So this is very focused, it's K to three. And the focus is to make sure, I think, all of us is that you, you learn to read, so then at, at the third, third grade, you read to learn. That's the focus and we want to catch kids at that third grade. And we want to make sure is, is that we provide the right supports. The check-the-box method, that's being thumbed down on, on boards of educations in state of Connecticut is not working and, um, it's, it's gone back to the CGA. We thank them for the spirit, I see you. Uh, we thank them for the spirit of what's, of what they're trying to attempt to do, but it's really, really locking a lot of good districts out that's doing the work. Uh, but if it doesn't check the box, you're not allowed to do it. So the waiver process is being reevaluated, um, but we all know across this country, um, we're having issues with literacy and math. We're talking about literacy right now and, and as a state, we have to find a way that the superintendents can apply for waivers or to show that their respective district is doing the work and that they're able to be able to checked off by the State Department of Education as complying with law. So I want to make sure we're very clear, the State Department of Education is just doing their job. And you can disagree with how they're doing the, the waivers, you can disagree how they're evaluating, but they are evaluating to the letter of the law. And that's where the friction is at this point.
So I hope that answers your question, Mr. Panels.
Well, so would.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wilson and then Mr. Madison.
Yeah, just a question of clarity, so, um, with the right-to-read, is there a curriculum or something of some sort that we do have to purchase?
So, um, would you like to answer that or would you like me to answer it? I yield to you, you are a professional. I, I, I have strong opinions on this, so I can talk all out of this one.
So, yes, they do have a list of, um, programs that we have to adopt one of those programs if we did not receive, um, the approval for what we're, we're currently using. Um, however, we did receive a transitional waiver, so we have a year to figure out which program we're going to use. Some of those programs are over one point eight million, um, dollars, so it's an incredible, um, you know, amount of money to just jump in and we have not really seen any data that backs any of these programs up. Um, and I think that kind of connects to, um, one of the questions that we received from Skantor earlier today. Um, you know, our instructional services supplies line, um, increased and that is because, you will see in the answer, um, we have put in there a hundred thousand for piloting a program. So we're just gonna, um, look for certain components of different programs that we feel like could supplement our current program, um, and we're going to pilot it during that year next year, waiting to see if anything differently is going to come down from legislation. If not, then the following year, you'll be expected to adopt, we will be expected to adopt a program.
So initially it came out as seven programs and as they went through the waiver process, that number swole to nineteen programs that have been accepted by the state that you had to adopt. And there's a huge financial infusion of funds that you, you have to really invest. Um, and so to my point that I just stated, instead of investing in a program, I'd rather invest in the, the human capital, invest in the professional development and drive, and drive the performance through that, through that avenue, instead of going to a, um, a boxed program that is out of state, no professional development, um, you're just cracking the sill, reading the instructions, and you're delivering, and that, that's no good.
Mr. Wilson?
So, a follow-up question, do we know, are this, is this program or these programs being sold by multiple people or?
Multiple, it's mul, it's multiple.
Multiple people.
People.
So whoever.
Different companies.
So there's, there's multiple people that are offering these one point eight million dollar?
Well, that's, that's a quote that we got for one program.
That's the quote we got for our.
That's the quote we got for our district.
Because we wanted to look, some of these programs, like for example, they don't have actual books. Students are reading on a device. So we wanted to look at programs that will actually put books in kids' hands. So we looked at one of the program and that's where we got that quote for 1. something million.
And the reason why I ask the questions I ask because this is deeply offensive, because it, to me, looks like another instance where at the state legislature, someone was talking in someone's ear and now somebody's getting a very big payday off of education in Connecticut.
Absolutely.
And it is.
That's, because that's what happened.
It's disheartening, you know? It's disheartening because as he mentioned, we, we need the human capital, we need funding from the state for reading intervention, things like this that we know work and that have worked and that oftentimes because of budget cuts throughout the years, we have not been able to do as much in many districts across the state. And, and now we're being forced to pay all this kind of crazy money. So I'm very disappointed in the, in the state legislature that they do let something like this happen to other districts in Connecticut.
So, Ms. Madison, if I recognize you. So this, this was birthed out of Mississippi and Mississippi is known one of the poorest states in the Union, unfortunately, and, and, and as the worst performing. And the, the individual that led that work in Mississippi spoke at the conference and provided the data and provided the logic and reasoning on how they laid it out and how they did the run rate and how they triangulated the data. Full hour and a half presentation. And the presentation that was given to us and what, what I heard within my own borders were total opposites. So as, as a cave president, I've asked her, and I'm going to continue to ask, I'm going to bring her up to Connecticut and what we need to do through cave and hopefully I can have some buy-in with CAPS through Fran, is that we just share the narrative. I think if we shared the narrative of what the, the idea of this program was that led to the, the bill and the state legislature to pass, I think it would be a better, better understanding from a professional standpoint. I understood it as an educated male that know how to read and have logical, do logic. You as the professionals, if you heard it from her perspective, maybe you might pick up something totally different and better than I would ever be able to pick up as an educator. But she was able to show data that her state is no longer the worst in, in reading. And it's definitely moved up at least like almost 17 positions in the 50, in the 50 states and the data and what they were trying to do. So I would just want to make sure that what's being done in Mississippi, I'm hoping that whatever the trends and strands that they do hopefully translate and what we can do here in Connecticut with the understanding, yeah, it's two different areas, two different ways, I get it. But if it works in one area, the logic by the state, state CGA was if it works there, it should be able to work here. And that's where we are right now. Ms. Madison.
Actually, by the time, since I raised my hand, you guys have piled on enough. I'm just going to pile on a little bit more. I have my five-minute rule. If I can't get the essence of something in five minutes online, it's garbage. This thing's garbage. I'll tell you why. When you guys talked about that learning classrooms thing, it took me less than five minutes to find an eight-page summary that has a lot of details and sent it to the entire board, right? I'm looking at this thing right now. It has all the, the buzzwords, it has no facts. I can't find any information. Right there, I'm already red flagging the thing. So I'm just piling on like you guys. I think this is nonsense. The other thing is, you know, latitude at the local level is how you great, great things. I, I asked folks last time, I'm like, where'd you learn about this thing about the classrooms? As people were rattling off all these things I know as a professional mathematician, working math. And I'm like, I was shocked. And somebody heard about it at a conference and told some friends. I'm like, hallelujah, that's how you learn to do great things. So I'm, I am scared by this. That's my two cents.
Mr. President, would you like to, would you like to?
Really ditto what, what almost everybody else has said here. And I, as president, I sit in with Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And if you haven't gotten a waiver, it's universally, we have school districts that are in distress. Where we may be struggling in, in reading at the third grade level and can improve, doesn't mean any of these programs are going to improve them. We have many districts that do very well in reading, but if they don't have one of these programs, they can apply for a waiver. And my understanding is from, from the conversations I had on a recent call last week, they haven't gotten the waiver. So they're doing well, but because they don't have one of these seven programs and they must, whatever program, if, if more have been accepted, they must not have been theirs that were accepted. So there's a universal concern. My understanding is there's been some lawsuits that were going to be filed. I don't know if they were. I know the legislature is hearing people about modifying the law and some, some thought, that some, some wanted just to get rid of it. It's more likely that there'll be some modification, but it will take a coordination between interested parties, including probably cave and, and CAPS, the Superintendent's Association, to be lobbying legislators around this issue because it may be $100,000 for this budget, but it could be over a million dollars. And every teacher has to be trained. So that means pulling, you know, P, professional development or pulling teachers at different times. And it's not necessarily going to be a one-shot training. It's going to be on, you know, ongoing. And there's probably going to have to be trainers that will train, will have to train folks to train other teachers in the district as well on an ongoing basis to make sure if we have to do this, whatever we pick is going to work. Thank you.
I'm going to sit on the rest of my comments because I'm very passionate about this because we, as cave president, we discuss this at least twice a week, where boards of education across this state are just like very, very upset and even more upset about the districts that obtained the waivers and their performance or perceived lack of. Where you have those that have performance and they don't check the box. So therefore, they don't get the waiver. So it's not healthy. I cheerfully say it from this seat and anyone can quote me, it's, it needs to be looked at. And it's, if we have that type of money to invest in reading and stuff like that, then we have money to invest to all the other unfunded mandates that have come through the state. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr., I mean, Dr. Hill.
Just wanted to share, I understand Mr. Madison's dilemma in finding data because you just really won't find a lot. But I did just share with the entire board and the cabinet, just, it's, it's quick to find information on the rankings, literacy rankings of states. So the miracle of Mississippi is.
That's what she called the miracle of Mississippi.
I just made that up.
No, no, that's what she called. That's what she actually called, the Mississippi miracle.
But as of 2023, just to let you know, like, it may be a miracle when they moved greatly, but they're still fourth from the bottom. Okay? So it's like, what people don't understand is like.
There's a lot of runway to go.
Right. If, if you, just understanding how data moves folks in public, if you are in the basement of your house and you walk upstairs to the first floor, you've made incredible progress if you live in a one-floor house and someone's already on the first floor.
Yep.
So not putting down the work that people have done, but when you have so far to go, any movement is great. But as of last year, they were still ranked fourth from the bottom. They moved up. Mexico is now the worst. And Connecticut, according to this article, is ranked 20th out of the 50 states. But it's just that, you know, sometimes we can get kind of caught up in, you know, the hype. And the other thing I want to make really clear is some districts, I don't think our president wanted to say it, but I'll say it. So districts like Greenwich and other districts that we know really wealthy, they do well, they're ranked in the top in our nation all the time, they didn't get waived.
They didn't get waived.
And they were told their progress is not good enough. And remember, this is a standardized test. So their number's like 70%, but that doesn't mean 30% of their kids can't read. It's this test that people are using. And I'm not, you know, you all, I'm not going to continue speaking on the political and the business side of it. I've done that for two years with other superintendents. So I'm, I'm kind of worn out telling people the truth, but I want people to understand how to look at numbers. So when people start talking about what they've done and what they've accomplished, look at where, you know, you look at data, you look at where'd you start? It's a, it's a, you know, if you're at a 50% and 100 is the goal, you make, you know, we gained 20%? That, that's incredible. Someone's already saying that 98. They, they don't have 20% to gain. So just understand that.
Any other discussion? Ms. Panos.
I was just wondering if Mr. Williston knew any state legislators that he could influence.
I know.
Well, I know, I know.
You guys got Kissel.
Well, I, I, I know of the members of the education committee. I know of the main proponent of this bill. Very candid, brash commentary. It's been very heated at the table with all the stakeholders. And at the end of the day, I will continue to stand up for the superintendents and the, and the teacher unions, that you're doing a great job. Yes, we want all of our scores to go up. We most definitely do, but these scores do not, I do not believe reflect all the work that the teachers are putting in. And yes, I want these scores to be better. I think all of us want these scores to be better. But to sit there and say that the teachers and the superintendents are not doing their job, they need to do better and they need to do more, at that point, it, it becomes callous. And as a board member, we're responsible for supporting those that are educating within our districts. And that's where the root of our pushback is right now. So it's a contentious battle and I have broad shoulders and I'm looking forward to continuing down the path. And Mr. Panos said he will be at my left side.
Get your right side.
I said, do not quote that.
Any other discussion on this matter? Any other discussion for these ladies? If there is none, thank you very much. Dr. Haiti, technology, please.
So I'll share some spotlights on current accomplishments for this year with our technology department. So we started this year to implement layered security measures to make sure that we're very well protected against any cyber attacks. We have trained all our certified staff on performance matters, which is our data warehouse where we house all our student data. We also house all our intervention data in that system. We are working really hard this year to align all our technology to our district priority. And some of the cuts that you will see in our software is because we are trying so hard to align, use technology as a tool to support teachers and instruction and not in place of effective teaching. We also, we are in the process of replacing a lot of our smart boards because now a lot of them, especially in elementary schools, are outdated and we can no longer service them. So we are in a process, in a five-year process to update and replace all smart boards with smart monitors or smart TVs. Some of the major work for next year is to continue to build the capacity of our teachers and how to use technology, instructional technology to support their teaching, using our instructional technology specialists that we have in our department. We are also training our staff and our students on how to properly use technology. And, you know, we're, we're going to start doing some family engagement event where we provide awareness to our families on how technology should be used and, at home, and how it could be used to supplement learning at home. So these are some of the major work that we are going to be focusing on next year. Any questions on technology?
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. On site 76, budget, I, uh, numbers, I see under equipment, you made reference to equipment. It's a significant decrease from last year, but it's still a pretty big increase from, if you were looking from '22 to '23. Is that mainly, and where you have the asterisk going down, it sounds like you're doing the Chromebooks, but you probably do a percentage of those each year, the iPad replacement 10%. And then it says, is, is it new the, I didn't look at last year's budget book, is it new the continue to replace classroom projectors? Is that within the last couple of years?
Yes.
You've started that project.
Yes. Last year, we started that project last year with our K2 schools. So we still have some K2 rooms that need to be done. And then the plan is to start with our three, five schools.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other discussion about technology? All right. I'm actually happy with this site. So I, I always speak on this one, but I'm, I like the way you landed here. So thank you, Dr. Hill. We're done with technology? We're done with technology, so we're going to go to pupil services?
Good evening. At this time, I like to call up my supervisors, Chris Bailey, Karen Lawson, and Lindsay Jardine. I'd like to start with highlighting some of our accomplishments so far this year. We'll start with our expansion and alignment of the ABA programs up at Quanic and OE. Providing, we've provided professional development district-wide, supporting the individual needs of our students. We've been able to continue supporting the co-teaching classroom through the coaching model at our elementary level. We've successfully reintegrated students back into our district and district programs. The PSE staff in schools are actively engaged in the MTSS meetings to help identify, intervene students facing academic and social challenges prior to identification. Some of the major work we're, we'll start working on is establishing more targeted, intentional professional development for our PSES staff, which will inform teacher practices, improve student learning outcomes. We're doing a needs assessment right now and identifying experts in our district and really communicating with the different departments what they feel are important learning outcomes for them. We are working on providing an increased level of support for the social, emotional, behavioral needs of students through looking at our continuous services and partnering with our SEL department. We are developing and implementing a district process to ensure equity across the district in regards to PSES services. So it doesn't matter what school a student attends, they're going to have access to the same equitable resources. And we are working on continuing to build the capacity of our in-district programs so Windsor students can be educated in Windsor. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Panos?
You mentioned that there's a rising prevalence of autism specters, spectrum disorder, you call it, AfD. Now, is that unique here to Windsor?
No.
Or to Connecticut or, or what?
Nationwide. A lot of it had to do during.
Something in the water or what?
Oh, yeah. Many reasons why students are identified on the spectrum. You have to understand it's a spectrum. Some kids could be more severe, some kids have less severe challenges, but it's a spectrum disorder. And so because they've expanded the criteria, we've had more kids identified, which has been compounded by.
Oh, you identify more now?
Identify more, which is compounded by COVID. So we're seeing the residual effects of COVID where students weren't able to get birth-to-three services. So a lot of those challenges, instead of being mitigated, they're coming into the schools with them.
So is, so is it temporary thing or is it, you think it's just a temporary wave up?
That can predict what the trend's going to be in autism. That's not an educational diagnosis, that's more a medical diagnosis.
Okay.
How was that, Ms. Panos?
Thank you.
Ms. Cantor, I was waiting for your hand to go up.
Thank you, I gave everybody else the opportunity. So I'm very, very strong on adding a full-time nurse or keeping a full-time nurse in the district. Like I said before, there are so many students who need immediate medical attention and you're really doing a disservice if you don't have a full-time nurse to provide care to these immediate situations. And you're doing a disservice to the nurse because you're leaving them liable for being sued and loss of license. And I think the immediate and timely medical treatment delivered to students here by the nurses and protecting them is the most utmost important thing that you could do for the budget now. So that's how I feel on that. Thank you.
I believe we're in agreement. That's why we're asking to have the SIR position funded.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. I know she's, are you passionate about that?
I'm very passionate and I'm going to have eyes, eyes on you guys.
So just want to be clear to the public, the budget is public right now, it's the superintendent's proposed budget. So we propose to have. So we propose to have that nurse, so-
Great.
You guys will vote. Just, because I know we have some new people on the board, so I just want to make it clear. Superintendent proposes the budget, we're going through it now, so we want the same thing.
Great.
And so you get to vote to keep it, you get to vote to say, hey, nope, we want to do some cuts, but we're in the same place, we want the same thing.
I wanted this back when I talked to Dr. Cook, because I know what was going on, so thank you so much.
So, okay.
Just a clarification, that one, that one that you're proposing is at the bottom of the page, is that the idea? Is that the health services that's being moved to general fund, is that the idea?
So there's a total, so there's a total of 10?
Right, I mean, you, the, right, the proposed above, right, above, it's referred to as proposed 24, is nine, and so the 10th is hiding below.
What we've done is made sure that we've separated ESER from the general budget. Now that we're absorbing all these F, the proposal is to absorb all these positions, we want to make sure that we bracket it out, showing exactly where it's being absorbed, so it's easily found.
But this, this means that you had last year, because from the list here, you had, we had nine FTEs for the last two years, as of current-
Plus the one nurse in the ESER-
Plus, plus the one nurse in the, so there was no short shortage, so why, why is there to talk about a shortage?
Because the proposed budget makes it seem like there's only going to be nine.
No, 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 you missed my point.
I'm totally missing it.
Yeah, is it? See what I'm saying? I'm looking down here and I see three years, the proposed and two years, all have the same number, 999 and 111. So you all, so you had 1010, you've already had 10 and 10. You've already had an extra for the last two years, yet am I told that you don't have enough?
We want to keep the one we've had.
Mr. Fury?
I don't believe right now one nurse has been replaced at Sage Park, so the floating nurse has been at Sage Park unless there's a need somewhere else, another nurse is out. And as we heard earlier, you know, sub-nurses are very hard to get, we knew that for many years. So.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we simply couldn't find a person to fill the full thing, is that? Why am I not understanding this? I'm sorry, and I need education here. I'm just looking at the math here, 99 and 911 and 1, that's 1010 and 10, excuse me, you're telling me you don't have enough?
I'm going to recognize Ms. Batchelder, because it's an HR question.
Okay, so we, it's kind of a two-part answer. So, Ms. Cantor, you keep referencing Dr. Cook. So, that conversation with Dr. Cook, we added a 1.0 floating nurse a few years back. Nothing to do with COVID, nothing to do with ESER funds. That was our-
That's in, that's in-
Ninth?
Yeah, that was in, that was one of the nine.
Yeah, that was one of our nine nurses. Our nursing supervisor used to be a nurse in one of our buildings. So that, it was nursing supervisor slash school nurse. ESER hip, we added an additional ESER nurse to then bring it to 10. We, a current position, a person resigned, and we did not fill it because we knew we were coming into budget, and if for some reason the board isn't going to support the ESER positions, we don't want to hire someone and then immediately lay them off. So at this point, we are at the same number as we were before COVID, which is a one additional nurse in order to have a floating nurse.
Okay, so you want one more?
Right, if we approve this budget as is, we'll be hiring one more.
Yes.
All right. It's, I can see, but you're not at full staff right now, basically, except for hiring from outsiders.
Right, we did not hire, we did not backfill, in essence, the ESER nurse.
Okay.
Mr. Alley?
Thank you. I just had, had one additional question about nursing. I just want to make sure our nurses and our nursing program have all the supplies and everything they need, so is there anything else that you need that may not be in this budget?
Ooh, that's a loaded question.
I can actually answer that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, who, wait a minute, who, wait a minute, who's speaking?
I would say right now, we have been being able to function with the money that's in the budget, so I think it is enough.
Are you reckoning somebody, are you reckoning someone at the table?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you're the speaker, I want to make sure you're yielding your-
Thank you.
I know, I got it.
We actually were very lucky that during COVID, which was very stressful for us nurses as it was, that the previous director, they had some money left over because we didn't have students in school. So with that, we were able to get some of the supplies, like new beds, because our beds were ripped, we were able to get some of the bigger items then. So even though COVID did hit us in a lot of ways, we did have some of that money and were able to use it, so we're not foreseeing any major items that we need.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for what you all do. Any other questions? All right, can you answer for me, because it seems like every building I go into, I get questions about the SLPs and the SLPA's?
Yes.
Can you explain to me, what is the appropriate, in your opinion, staffing levels of the Ps and the, which I believe are the seniors or the certified, and then you have the As, where they're going through their process and they're like understudies, the way I perceive it as, understudies. How are we with these positions? Are we fully staffed? Do we need more than what we have? Do we need more than what we're asking for? I just need some understanding with that.
Well, we will be fully staffed, we're onboarding two additional SLPs, they just haven't started yet, they've been hired, their hire dates are in February, and then we're interviewing for another SLPA. In the meantime, we are mitigating the circumstances, we are using our staff district-wide to make sure that every student is getting some speech and language, and we're keeping track of whom we might still owe compensatory aid to. So once we're fully staffed, we'll be in a good place. If you're going to ask me if I think that we should get another SLP, I mean-
Yes, I'm asking that question.
Sure.
No, because if we're going to be being courageous here and adding stuff that we feel we need, if we need more in the building, if you feel you need more Ps or more As or a combination of both, this is the time we need to hear it, so that we can deliberate that.
I think we certainly can manage everybody getting services. I mean, the new structure of the SOPs coming into the next school year is that they're going to be district-wide, so that goes in alignment with our looking for equitable services. So you might be at a school that has two SLPs, but your numbers are not high, and now you're at another school where their numbers are high, but they have an SLP and a SLPA. So really looking at it district-wide, so of course, everybody would always want something extra, but I think looking at the numbers this year and looking at the structure for next year, we'll be in a really good place.
That's all I need to hear. I wanted to make sure I asked the question, and you gave me an answer, and so when we deliberate, we can discuss that. Any other questions for this site? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is District Policy and Planning, Ms. Batchelder?
You did both, you did both, Paige, oh, okay. No, I wasn't, okay, okay.
No, she did, she, you're all done, right? I thought I took care of, yeah, you're good. Okay.
Okay, is there something else?
No.
No, no. Ready? I'll recognize Ms. Batchelder, do you want to come to you?
You did, well, this is my part.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Batchelder, I'm so sorry.
I'm sure there'll be tons of questions, so, on my gigantic budget. So, I'll just share some of the highlights, District Policy and Planning in the superintendent's office. This is also, as you look at the budget side, just for our new board members, this is where you guys get your money from as well, so you see that. But just some of our goals, we have, it was stated already that we are back underway with the work on the profile of a graduate, so that's work is work that we're looking to get completed for this year. Also, we have the goal of updating all board policies as best we can, I know it's an ambitious goal, but we're going to try to do it this year, so Series 1,000 through 6,000. And you've also heard, there's been quite a bit of talk tonight about adopting a reading program, so we'll be doing our piloting, piloting this year, but that's a big goal for us, because it's, right now, it's a, it's the law, and it's a requirement, so we're going to have to get it done. Thankfully, we don't have to spend 1.8 million this year. And we have contract negotiations coming up this year, so that's big. The teachers' union always sets the tone for negotiations, so that's coming up for this year. So those are the big items and goals, and the funds are what they are. I have made, it's always looking to be efficient, so as it was stated earlier as well, the Office of Family and Community Partnerships, that was a grant-funded position, so that position no longer exists in the entity of one person. The work has been dispersed partially to our communications person and the other part to our SEL director. So I found a way to save us some money in doing this budget, but still continue with the work, because the work is extremely important to what we're doing here in Windsor.
All right, any discussion? And I think he made it clear that all the work we do with CAE and other stuff also comes out of this site as well. And I want to make sure that every board member has the opportunity to go to a CAE conference, to enjoy that professional development, as well as any other professional development that our membership dues, offer us, to keep up on our skills, to make sure that we can support the superintendent. So I'm hoping and praying we don't touch any funding in this particular area, and quite frankly, I would love to send some of our board members to the national convention and really, really get to share perspective with your colleagues from across the country, and look at the point of views, both conservative and liberal, and to be able to collaborate, discuss, and to, for me personally, when I think the green, the grass is greener on the other side, or we got it bad, I always come back to Connecticut feeling pretty good. We not where we want to be, but I come back feeling pretty good. And I want the rest of this board at some point to be able to have that experience. If that means every year we cycle one or two board members out to go to the national convention and do a cycle that way, I think it's an investment that would be well-served this board and this community. So those are the type of things I would like to do in the future, not, I don't see it in this budget, I didn't mention it in the budget, I would love to add it to this budget, but I understand that we are under fiscal constraint, but also, we're responsible, the nine of us are responsible for advocating for public education in the town of Windsor, and to make sure that we support through policy, curriculum, appropriations, which is the budgeting, and to, to everybody's point, to supervise and to support the superintendent. So those are our roles, and I want to make sure that we're well-prepared for that. Any other discussion? Mr. President?
Kind of a plug for CAE, but one of the things that came out, and Mr. Panos was with me when we heard this, in doing some resolutions, that it's required for board members to go through professional development.
State law.
We did find out, yeah, state law, but we found that there's probably no teeth in enforcing it.
Right.
But it is required, and we support the professional development of all our professional educators. For us to be able to really do the best work that we can, we need to know what other districts do, what's the professional opinions on certain items. So we do pay our CAE dues, so I would encourage folks, when you get your newsletters, to read them. I know Mr. Panos and I have had some discussions on, recently on some of the newsletters, but you know, the good thing about CAE 2 physically, to go down and meet with folks, they're in Weathersfield, it's not far to pick up the phone and talk to, ask to speak to one of the professionals, whether it's a policy person or an expert in board, and they'll sit down with you. If there's, if you want to explore and better understand their website, or you have trouble navigating it, there's another person who, you go and sit down with them, or they can probably do it by sharing screens. So just kind of a plug to fellow board members, I know we're all busy, and just hopefully you can find the time to take advantage, if not a set course, find it, you know, has it been recorded? Most of them are, so we have really, opportunities really from your home to see a lot of things. Thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Panos frees the journal on a monthly basis, and you see my monthly commentary, and you haven't commented yet, so I must be doing a good job.
It's just as low as your premiums over here. You know, it's, this professional development is easy, pretty easily said when you're retired.
Yeah.
So, but, but for those who are supporting us-
I'm not retired. I take offense, I feel attacked.
Well, are you sure you're not retired?
Oh, I'm, I work.
You've spent a lot of time.
I thought you, I thought you worked at Aller, that's my part-time job.
Is he? I, I hope he's not asleep there. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Next is Employee Personnel Services. Do I recognize Ms. Batchelder for this, sir?
Yes, this is actually her department.
Ms. Batchelder?
She's not just, she's a representative.
Yeah, so, so this is actually mine, so Dr. Hill mentioned about, regarding the WEA contract is coming up, so we will be in full swing come late August 2024, and we will need a town council representative. Our previous one that always, it joined us, is no longer on the council, so we're going to have to do some recruiting. We, in my opinion, successfully completed all other non-certified contracts, it was a lot, it came to everybody in executive session, but in my opinion, our employees, we did right by our employees, and I definitely stand by that. Another area that falls under Employee Personnel Services, but is a direct link with Dr. Haiti's department, is the seed evaluation plan, so that is something brand new, that's going into effect next school year, so the PDEC committee is working on that, and it'll be a joint project and evaluation plan from that committee, and that will be presented to the board once that is completed.
Well, I can tell, I can tell you I'm on that committee as well, with the state, and we are, for the board members, there is going to be a CAE webinar this Thursday at noon, where we're going to be working with CEA and AFT, and we're going to be rolling it out to the districts to explain exactly what the evaluation process is going to be. We're going to take it back to, I think it was 2012, where the original process that's in place came out, and how we had to really, really break down some trust issues and to get to a place where it was all about the student. We definitely discussed a lot of things about evaluations, a point system, from a board member perspective, we discussed that we evaluate the superintendent, we expect the superintendent to be able to, he or she to be able to evaluate their staff in a very, very fair and objective manner that meets the, not only the evaluator, who's the administrator, but the teacher, so that it's engaging for both parties and that it's a fair system. A lot of pushback, a lot of, lot of discussions. I think we landed at a sweet spot, I believe, that should be good for everybody, but it also allows the autonomy, bless you, it allows the autonomy of each district to be able to modify for their districts with the understanding that they got to stay within the structure. So please feel free to join the CAE webinar this Thursday, if not, it will be recorded, and it's rolling out and through the State Department of Education, and we're going to have to make sure that we support- And we're going to have to make sure that we support in this budget, the professional development, not only for the administrators, but for the teachers, to make sure that this is effectively rolled out and to make sure that everybody has the proper planning time and the, the, the tools they need to be able to execute. So this is a process for everybody and it's all supposed to be student-centered. And as long as we stay on that path, which I know we will, I think every single child in the state of Connecticut will benefit from this. So everyone is going to feel the pain in this. Everyone's out of their comfort zone in this process. There's going to be a lot of accountability in this process. There's not going to be any rating systems, but there will be some accountability. A lot more evidence that needs to be produced by, by not only the evaluator, but the, the teacher. It's not designed to be a got you, it's designed to actually provide you with the skills you need to educate our kids and to make sure that the professional development is there and that everyone is executing at the level that their superintendent is commanding of them to be at. That's the key piece. We are holding our superintendents accountable for the performance of the staff to drive performance, not only for the kids, but this should be fulfilling for our staff. And that's the lens that we went through in this process.
Any discussion? Any discussion for this site? All right, we will move on to fiscal management.
Okay, so this site oversees all of the district funds from accounts payable, grants, everything, and public transportation, and also all of our safety and security. So that all falls under these few sites. And we're continuing to work with the town on energy conservation products, products, excuse me, projects. We just added or re, re, I'm sorry, I can't talk tonight. We just implemented, re-implemented our safety, security, and wellness committee. That was stopped due to COVID, so we're all back together again. It's a great committee. It's really heavily attended, which I'm always happy about, getting all the perspectives from every school and anything, you know, that they see that may be an issue. And I have a joint coach, co-chair with Marty Maynard, who is the risk assessor through the town. So we are constantly in, in discussions regarding that and really looking at all of our workers' comp cases and seeing what we can do for the district to better help our employees.
And for, for the board members, this is page thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, which shows you the breakdown of certain items. Any discussion for Ms. Batchelder? Mr. Wilson and then Mr. Panos?
Oh, yeah, I see the first, first goal you guys had here. Continue to work with the town on energy conservation projects. I was just wondering of some ideas that you guys have been coming up with?
So that is partly our navigate system. We've been trying to implement and get the first responders on board with that system. That's our safety and security system. I mean, I could definitely get into a lot of detail with it, but not in public.
No concession, please.
So, yeah.
That's fair.
Okay.
Who was next to my left? Was it you, Ms. Panos? Or Mr. Fury, was it you?
No.
Mr. Panos and then Ms. Canter, I know I saw Ms. Cantor, but I saw her hand before your, Mr. Panos?
You need to tell us. Describe employee self-service.
Yes, so our financial management system is called Munis. It's a Tyler platform, so everything is, that is really our financial management system, as well as our employee management system. So everything from W2s, 1099s, paychecks, accounts payable, everything comes out of that system. So right now, for an example, once we get ESS up and running, something like the employees now have to go to the school admin assistant to change their address. School admin assistant then literally still has like the three-part form. Then that gets sent down to HR. So with this new system, platform, all of our employees will be able to actually change a lot of their demographics themselves. A lot, many school districts have this. So in, another good benefit of this is that for W2s, I can't tell you how many people ask for W2s after the fact, or from two years ago, if they're buying a house, if they're redoing a mortgage, anything like that, employment verification. They're going to be able to bring up all of their own information once they log into the employee self-service section of Munis.
Which is done by paper now?
I'm sorry?
It's done, how is it done right now? You go, you come into the office or you, you?
So a W.
You fill out a piece of paper like you did.
So an address would be that. But, so if someone wants a W2, my accounting manager has to stop what they're doing, then go back into get, you know, 600 W2s, find out which one, because people don't always tell us when they're changing their address and then send it out. Now they can just go in and print it out themselves and they can go back years, years and years. They can go back and see prior pay stubs, even though people can and should save them and we send them to them every two weeks, but they don't. So now we're always backtracking, giving people the information again because they don't save the financial stuff.
So formally, how were you doing this? You were just, like you say, just?
People call and we have to
Go back.
Go back and get, gather all the information.
And this is brand new for this year or, I mean, for the upcoming?
Yeah, we're, we're implementing it this year to hopefully go live.
So ESS would be a new, it's a separate software? You're saying that, that is meldable into the Munis or what?
No, Munis, it's just, it's almost like another portal into Munis. It's cloud-based.
But is it part of Munis?
It's a module, thank you. It's a, yes, it's part of Munis.
Oh, okay.
It's Munis self-service.
Okay.
Officer?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
So when are you going live with this system and are you doing a parallel run before you introduce it to everybody?
So what's nice about this compared to going live on anything financial is there's no parallel anything because it's brand new. So we are going to push it out to all, all of our employees. And then they will have to log into it. The town currently has this portal.
Oh, okay, so you don't, you're not really going live, you're just introducing it to them.
Exactly.
And that should save you a lot of time and a lot of redundancy. A lot, thank you. I, I do have a question on transportation after, though. Oh, I can ask now? It was one of my questions for the late buses. How many late buses are there for Windsor High School and Sage Park Middle School on each of the late days? And please explain the process between Windsor Public Schools and Daco for no-show late buses at those two schools and the responsibility for notification to the parents? And also, are there any billing adjustments or reimbursements?
Yep, so we have six buses and they, they come up to the high school first, get the students, then go over to Sage, get the students, and then we have a very general drop-off. It's, there's not a lot of stops because it is the late bus. But we have six buses and they are designated to different areas of the town. If a bus does not show up, it would be because that bus is still on that third-tier run with the elementary school. So if that would happen, that were to happen, the, one, they, either Daco is going to send another bus or a bus will be combined. If there isn't that many students when they get to the site, they could combine it. The, the communication to parents is, is a tough one at that hour. But it, what would happen, it would come from Daco to the school and then the school would make that robocall out. I know you had a specific.
I just want to make sure there's a safety net that Daco does notify the school.
They do notify the school, the
But no one notified the students. Because there was one bus that didn't show up as of six o'clock at night and the high school gets out by 2:30.
Right, I mean, that was back a few months ago.
No, that was last winter.
Last winter?
Yeah, last year.
Okay, so more than six months ago?
Um, I think it was last, I don't know, it was last winter. I, I don't remember.
No, I, I do remember because I remember talking with Ms. Brangialo about it.
Kids don't get left there. This is no reflection on anybody. I just want to make sure. Daco notifies the school and someone in the school tells the kids, because the kids have to call someone for a ride.
Yep, absolutely.
So I just want to make sure there's no fallout.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, this is another one for Ms. Batchelder. I was just wondering, I don't know if she can even answer this question. Why did you guys choose Munis? You know, I, I mean, over the years, I feel like I like ADP.
You have ADP?
Yeah, I've, I've had Munis and ADP at, at differing jobs, but it's like, I feel like I like ADP better. Is it like a cost thing? Was it better?
So
Better for schools?
Wait a minute, before I begin, before you ask that, are you, Dr. Hill, comfortable answering that since that's a? About, are you come about, talk about two? I'm just making sure, just. Oh, Ms. Batchelder?
It's just a, a question.
So Munis, so first Tyler is, monopolizes education by far. So there are a few products under Tyler. I've always under the belief that ADP was a payroll company, not a financial management system. So Munis, one, the town has it and we have to be able to talk to the town. So it's, it's not like we can just go off and do our own thing because they won't let us. However, we've used it for so, so long and I've been involved in the act of changing to a new financial management system and it is a lot. It's a lot and, and it would be a lot of money, a lot, a lot of money, like hundreds of thousands for implementation because it's just, it's so in-depth.
What you want to stress, though, is the ability to talk to other systems and other departments across municipalities and it's the most common one. And she said, when you go to conferences, so next time you're at CAE, look up at some of those booths. You're going to see Tyler is Amazon when it comes to school stuff like that. And they, if there's a company that's really hot too, by the way, you'll see them one year, Tyler will purchase them before you get to the next year.
All right. Any other questions for fiscal management? All right, I'm hearing none. All right, we've taken care of our packet for today. I am, I am aware, I've been, well, based on me seeing my emails, I do know that there were two sets of questions that came in. I believe Ms. Cantor and Mr. Panos. If I'm not, was there anybody else that submitted stuff? What I'm going to humbly and respectfully ask this group again, that if you are going to submit questions, that we give the superintendent office a full business day and opportunity to be able to answer the questions. Now, I thank the staff for their due diligence in answering the questions and handing them out. I really do. But I have to make sure that we understand that the staff probably not going to be monitoring the emails for our questions and focusing on other things. So we have to give them a fair opportunity to answer these questions in a timely manner. I am asking, if you have questions for the next meeting, I ask that you have them and by noon on Monday. That next Monday is, I, I, Ms. Panos, I see your hand, I'm just, I'm going to give you all the opportunity in the world.
Yeah.
Next Monday is February 5th, noon. Is there any heartburn, Dr. Hill, from you, anything after that point?
So no, but the reason for the 24 hours is so we can actually get you answers. And, you know, so my team gets a late evening request for questions, they want to answer them, but they're trying to be prepared so that when we come in these meetings, we can answer all the questions that are going to be presented. Right, so, because you, when you're doing a budget, and, and it's for my administrators as well, they're learning, and again, for board members who have been through this, when you're going through a budget, it, it's not about all the things that we necessarily do, but the financial impact of each of those things. And so when you have nine different people reading something, they're all going to have different questions. So you're already trying to have your mind in a space where you can answer them on the spot. So any questions outside of that, that's why we give you the budget. So you can look at it and, you know, questions come up. None of the questions are like not legitimate questions. We just want the time to answer them, you know, very carefully and to mull over them so that when we come in, not only have we answered that question of that particular board member, which inevitably spurs questions from other board members. So we need to be ready to answer the question all the way around.
So I'll, I'll be transparent for the public. I, I flew in from DC this, this, this afternoon to be here, so I was not monitoring my emails. So I did not pick up on these questions until around about 4:30, 5 o'clock myself. So I was not monitoring email, I was just trying to get home so I could be in my seat. So if I'm held accountable for that, so be it. I was not monitoring email, so I will take the hit for that.
Mr. Panos?
I do apologize, I have a, I have a bad habit being late, that's a, that's a, poor student habit, that's a. But I, it would be a lot better to have it two hours beforehand rather than to ask you the question here. And, and sometimes, and if you prepare, so, for example, if we asked a number of questions here, clearly there was no, there was zero time to prepare for it. But at least if you had them, you know, a half a day ahead of time, you had something and, and, you know, it's shown by the fact that you could, in fact, address the question. So, you know, it's kind of hard to understand the criticism other than that, yes, you're right. If we asked for a big, if I asked for a list of things, I, I almost don't expect it to have it this time, but at least you'd have an idea of what I'm going to ask for, for you can, you can do it next, next week. But I'm just, just thinking logically here. Are you, are you better off for us to spring the question on you right here or spring it on you at, at four o'clock or earlier?
Well, I, I want to, but I was just saying. It's, it's better for you to spring it on us at four o'clock like the day before. That's, because we give it, we
Oh, that's true.
We give it, we give it so far in advance that, so at this point, right, let's be realistic, you've all had the budget for two weeks. So, I mean, the due diligence is, you go through the budget, that's not me, that's, that's your board, your finance chair. So you've had it for two weeks, so you know what's there. So we just need to know what questions and, you know, I, I just don't think that it just springs into people's mind at four something in the afternoon.
No, it doesn't.
You know, that, that one I can't buy. I can buy a last-minute couple of questions. No, I'm just saying it's, I would, I think you know what you want to ask the day before.
It has to ferment. Creativity, you know.
I digress. I appreciate something that has aged gracefully. But if it can age over the weekend and come up Monday morning, I'm, I'm all right with two buck chuck. That's good.
Sometimes we get distracted, you say, but.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it obviously makes sense. We were, even though we had, board members were told in general what sections we were going to be doing each night, the call has been from the finance chair and I think from me as well, to read the whole book as soon as you can. And then obviously, if you can't get all your questions, you try to front-load based on what's going to be there. I remember some of my earlier board meetings where the number of questions that were asked at the dais that couldn't be answered. And so the next week, we, the next week on a Tuesday or whatever, we would spend an inordinate amount of time going through all those questions. So this, you know, obviously it's better to ask it in it, you know, do end up asking it past the noon cutoff, you have to be able to say, I know I'm probably not going to get any answer for this because staff is doing other things as well. But is it better to ask them here? Probably not, because you might say, I can do that one versus coming in here. Probably not, because you might say, I can do that one versus coming in here and saying, no, I'm gonna have to get back to you. So next week might be the last meeting unless we extend to the following Tuesday. So this coming Tuesday, very important, in my opinion, to make sure any questions that you know you're gonna have that, especially if they're gonna take research time to, to get those in. Some questions may not take, and, and many of the professionals will be able to answer the question off the top of their head. Thank you.
Mr. Panos?
Sorry, did you hear?
Yeah, just to, uh, address this, of course, the first week was, we had all the principals here, so it was a kind of a buzz of, of things to, to examine. It's a little difficult to formulate the, the, the questions. You'll notice several members didn't, didn't submit any, you didn't submit any questions, right? You know, so does that mean you didn't read the book? I don't know what does it mean. But, uh, it, you know, at least it shows that it was some effort was made to formulate the question and to, and to give it some, you know, put it in a, put it in written form so that it's, it's clearer and not just sprung out over here. So, um, you know, I, 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 I think it'll be a lot easier to, uh, comply with Dr. Hill's, uh, request here, because it's gonna be a lighter load at the end, we've already been through. But it is, it is a bit of a buzz, uh, buzzsaw work, you know, the, the first part of it to, to get, uh, because it's a, a lot of work that these folks do. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Um, I appreciate the feedback, it's definitely not criticism. If it was criticism, I would call people by name and say, Mr. or Mrs. this, this is something that I don't appreciate. That's an example.
Well, it sounded like that.
No, no, it's, I, I, trust me, I'm not shy of my words. I, I think people know me for that. What I've asked is that we give the staff the appropriate fair amount of time to be prepared. And equally, that every board member gets to see your stuff in a fair amount of time, because what you are saying is definitely good stuff. You're not questioning, I'm not questioning it, I'm just questioning the timeliness that the staff and the actual other board members can be able to participate. Now, frankly, I, I don't ask questions because I, I think I have a good grasp of the budget personally. That's not to say no one else doesn't have a good grasp of the budget. All I'm saying is, is that they do a good job presenting, they, um, are clear and concise with the questions that I may have. And frankly, there's times that, um, if there's something that I don't know, and I've been in the role of finance chair for quite a while, um, I will ask Dr. Hill and Ms. Batchelder immediately when I get the budget book. And then I will ask them to please make that as a point of emphasis on your presentation. So that if, if I, if, if something I miss, might be a one in a hundred chance that someone else might feel the same way. So, at the end of the day, I'm just asking for some timeliness. Life happens, and you're right, some of us don't supply questions. And, but I don't want anything to suggest that none of the nine here are doing their work or not doing their work. I'm of the strong belief, all nine of us are doing our work in their own way, in their own space, and that, you know, in their own pace. So if anyone took it as differently, that is definitely not the intent of this person.
So I, I want to agree with Mr. Panos. I actually looked at, so moving forward, I mean, we're in this year now, but moving forward, there will be, um, changes to that very first meeting, because it was a lot, right? And I thought about the new board members, like, that was a lot. And we're supposed to be doing the budget stuff, so, um, that part, uh, I take responsibility for, because I looked at it after last week and I was like, huh, I'm changing that moving forward. That's not how I want people to focus on, um, doing budgetary things. And so I will sit down with my leaders, I want the leaders involved. Since, since I've become superintendent, I've said that, I've done that and demonstrated that. Because you don't learn anything sitting in a school building and then superintendent comes back and just sends paperwork out to you or an email. So I want them involved, I want them to see this, how it works. But moving forward, we will make changes to that, because that's a lot to absorb. And we'll save presentations for presentations. And we'll stick to more of a financial hit. I even thought about the audience to visitor time, right? Because we almost never use that, right? No one says anything.
No, we're obligated to present it, though.
But we, we are. So just trying to always look for ways to be efficient and make sure everyone is heard fairly. So, uh, Mr. Panos, your, your point is heard and I, I, I agree with it.
One final point is, Mr. Panos did submit a packet. Yeah, let the record reflect that you two agreed on this point, on a point.
This is shock.
Yeah. Mr. Panos did submit a packet last week, and I believe we went through some of those points. I want to make sure, um, that we don't lose sight of that packet and to see if there's anything that we've resolved at this meeting, and if there's anything that we need to discuss next meeting. So I don't want to lose sight of that. Ms. Batchelder, and then I'll recognize Mr. Williston. And everybody has your packet from last week, correct? It was the packet, um, Mr. Panos, it's, it's titled, Questions for Jan- for January 23rd Finance Committee Meeting, submitted by Mr. Paul Panos, January 23rd, 2024. As we wait for Ms. Batchelder, Ms. Cantor?
Am I gonna get a chance to respond to what you said, or are you moving forward with the next set of questions?
I'm not moving forward for anything. As I stated, I'm gonna recognize Ms. Batchelder, then I'm gonna recognize Mr. Williston. I did not see your hand.
I had my hand raised up after Paul and you never called on me.
I did not see your hand, so.
Be mine.
Yeah, shame on you, yes. I will recognize you, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you very much for finally allowing me to say my piece. Um.
No, 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 you're not recognized yet.
Oh, all right.
Ms. Batchelder?
Would you like me to go through the questions that I think?
I just want to, I just want to make sure if there's anything that.
Yep.
Did we satisfy anything on Mr. Panos's list? And I want to make sure we level-set if there's anything remaining from that list on the 23rd.
Okay, so question one, question three already answered.
One is answered, three is answered.
Question four, I believe, is answered when, um, we discussed last week, or, yeah, last week with Principal Jorgensen.
Okay.
Same with question five, thank you for that, that was my error. I got number happy. Okay, um, question six, uh, regarding special ed, I believe that was covered tonight.
Okay.
Question eight and nine were already covered last week.
Question eight and nine, yep.
Question seven, excuse me, also was covered last week with the walkthroughs with Dr. Haiti. Question 10 would have been last week, it was not discussed, but the answer is here. Um, the question regarding the ROTC positions. These positions used to be under the Alliance Grant. And as the Alliance Grant is all, is flat-funded now for a few years, as salaries have gone up, we have to start to have people go into general fund. Um, question 11 was answered tonight, I believe, rega- oh, no, excuse me. Yes, uh, tonight regarding the pilot, the new pilot program for the reading program, and also the magnet school tuition increase.
Okay.
Question 12 and question two, I believe we will discuss next week when we get to the SCL sections and family community partnership sections.
What about question 13?
And 13, I believe I answered.
Okay.
Those are the one, the positions that are not currently in the general fund that used to be an ESER.
So, Mr. Panos, are you in agreement that we still owe you discussion on question two and question 12 from your packet last week?
Sure.
Any, any, any other feedback from the board on the packet? All right, so we are gonna be answering question two and question 12 at the beginning of next week's meeting. All right?
Sounds good.
Mr. Williston?
Um, can we ask anything about this packet? I just had a follow-up question.
I, I was gonna recognize Ms. Cantor if the, if the, if that's what you, you're trying to get at. Because we haven't discussed this packet.
All right, that's fine, move on.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I just want to point out, this is unpaid elected position. And I, like Julie, I'm a registered nurse, I'm a licensed healthcare professional. And sometimes I have a lot of time and sometimes I don't. And I have to work within the guidelines of standard of care and safe care. And sometimes you can't leave your shift because you'll be sued, and there'll be litigation because of patient abandonment. So I do the best I can. Now, if I, I could've sent some of it in piecemeal, but would you want to get questions like, maybe Sunday at 3:00 AM? And then more questions following that? Would you want like four or five when I have different times to go through that? Or would you like to get a lump at once? Now, the other thing is, I know a lot of people who sit on boards in different states, including Connecticut, who are executives too. And a lot of the people who report to the board don't get any time, uh, to prepare. They have to know this, a lot of the material off the top of their head, these questions for certain things, because they're paid well and they run these specific areas to a T. So, I mean, I don't think my questions were that difficult, you know, for, I, I just feel like you can look at it and they should be able to explain a lot of it. I don't think it's time-consuming from my point of view, because I don't do their job. So that, those are my comments on that. But I will try to get it to them 24 hours ahead of time.
I, I appreciate your commentary, and of course, we're all volunteers.
Yes.
And we have to meet everybody where they are. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that we respect everybody's time. And we want to just make sure that we're able to all understand and read. Like, for example, for me, I work, just like you do, I volunteer just like you do, and I openly admitted in front of this group, I was not prepared for this meeting because I was not able to see your emails. I openly. Yes, ma'am?
Go ahead. But like I said, I'm a licensed healthcare professional, I don't always have time. Sometimes, I told Dr. Haiti, sometimes I don't get to look at this stuff until Tuesday or Monday night before the meeting because of my professional role as a licensed healthcare professional. That's what I just want to make clear. This was not done intentionally, and I just want everybody to understand that. I cannot get sued because of that. Thank you.
duly noted, I will thank you for sharing your perspective.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Williston? Now, so this packet that Mr. Panos and Ms. Cantor, um, handed out, it's the pink sheet. Everyone have the pink sheet? I think the only one that does not have it is, um, Ms. Taylor. Because these were printed and provided to the board tonight. So, um, Ms. Batchelder, would you please, if, well, before I do that, this was not part of today's agenda, I'm asking that we add this to the end of the agenda today? Um, the actual rubric sheet to make sure that we resolve this today? Is there any objection to resolving this tonight?
No.
Ms. Batchelder?
Okay, um, so question one was, um, from Mr. Williston last week. Um, so, um, this is the breakout of who and how people qualify for free and reduced meals. And this is also in a lot more detail on our website also, just for your reference.
Another question.
Sure.
So, I was just wondering, is this just, like, this is just bare minimum, basically? Trying to understand, could we possibly do more? Not saying that.
Could we do more for, to have?
Yeah, could we increase any particular bracket if we wanted to?
No, this is, this is, yeah.
Just a law that we have to follow?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that I was ta- I was telling Dr. Haiti, um, the other day, is we're actually, um, because school food is self-funded, um, and that area, that department has quite a bit of revenue balances just because of everything, we're getting a lot of money from the feds. Um, so one of the things that they're doing is actually switching, um, platforms for next school year. So we're not gonna be doing meal time anymore. And with this new platform, we're actually gonna be able to have everything electronically for free and reduced applications. So right now, it's literally paper form back and forth. So now, we're gonna be able to send it out and parents will be able to do it online for those that, that just to make it easier and quicker.
All right, we're all set, we're quest- and any, any questions on question one? No objection, I'll move to question two. Ms. Batchelder?
Okay, uh, question two is a breakout of the instructional services, um, instructional supply line item for the increase for the proposed amount of $216,000.
All right, any questions about the response, or shall I say, the answer to question two? And what, what I will say is, if there's any, if you think of something about this packet after the fact, just please email myself and Dr. Hill, and Dr. Hill will make sure he gets it to the appropriate person. Okay? I hear nothing for question two? Question three?
Okay, question three is regarding, um, Chromebooks and iPads for K3 students. Um, I believe Dr. Haiti answered this one already.
Yep.
Okay.
Question four?
Question four, I answered at the start with the, it's regarding the school nurse, and it's in our proposed budget already.
I believe that was asked and answered, are we in agreement?
Yes.
All right. Number five?
Number five, uh, the question was, why such, I'm just summarizing, why such a large increase in tutors in special ed? And I gave a breakout of what was budgeted versus what was actually expended. And that is why, uh, that's why I added that much of an increase to that line item. So last year, um, which you all saw in the financial management, or, excuse me, the financials from the Board of Ed meetings, we were close to $200,000 in the whole for tutors last year for special ed.
All right, any questions about question five? Uh, I'm hearing none. Question six?
Question six, I answered already tonight, uh, lay buses.
I do believe that was asked and answered as well. Any questions? Question seven?
Physical plant.
Um, that, that can be discussed next week?
Sure, yep, okay.
We're doing a physical plant next week, so without objection, we will handle this question next week?
And number eight.
And number eight? Any objection?
And number nine. And 10, I'm sorry. They're all under that.
So, seven, eight, nine, and 10 will be discussed when we discuss that site next week. Is there any objection? All right, hearing none. That takes care of the first packet. The next, I believe, um, the next packet is, um, Mr. Panos's. Um, we're gonna go back to question one.
Um, okay, so this was, um, discussed tonight under Dr. Haiti's budget regarding PD for teachers and coaches.
All right, question two?
Um, again, technology for contracted services, so we will bring the detailed software list to you next, um, next week.
All right, so understood that we owe Mr. Panos for question two? Any objection? Question three?
Um, same, question three, I believe, was answered earlier tonight. We've reduced, um, a lot of our software due to streamlining, um, all of our equipment.
Question four?
Uh, I put, uh, yep, same question as, yep.
Question five?
Question five, yes, this is a new position, but I'm no longer talking about this in open session.
All right.
Question six, special ed, um, for the legal fees, yes, these are absolutely, um, monies for representatives and mediation, tendence at PPTs, et cetera, for legal.
So, the, Mr. Panos?
Well, just saying, uh, would this, if, if we were sued, would this be the budget for it? Or would that be a separate issue?
That, so, what would end up happening, depending on the, the lawsuit and the litigation of it? We would first definitely deplete, um, pupil services, but then it would end up going into a Board of Ed, so it would then hit Dr. Hill's budget, your budget.
Or, 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 oh, you see, yeah, yeah, because it, it's possible, you know, I've heard of some settlements being fairly, you know, high. But, all right, thank you, you know, we, we'd have to go to the, the town or something.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then.
Seven?
Question seven, um, that was one I need to, uh, pull from Munis, so I'll bring that next week too. next week too.
All right. So for Mr. Panos's set of questions, we owe Mr. Panos number two and number seven. And from this first set of questions, I believe, um, we owe, let me make sure I got my notes correct. We owe seven, eight, nine and 10. Is that correct?
They're answered, but we'll just discuss them next, yeah.
They're answered, but they're gonna be discussed when we discuss the site.
Right.
Is there any questions that, um, we have not answered that I need to resolve at this point? Looking to my left, looking to my right. Seeing and hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Um, there is no announcement, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, we adjourn.
Mr. Panos moves, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Panos, second by Mr. Fury to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same, abstention. Motion carries unanimously, 8:35. Have a good evening.